I'm Tony KVT Rocks and my guest today is Carl King. Carl is a candidate for the upcoming city council elections. Okay Carl, over to you.
Hello everybody.
You've been here before.
Yes.
In fact, you've been in that very chair before.
I believe so.
It's probably the same crappy chair too. So, what made you run?
The part of being my civic duty, I feel that calling. I feel that I have a, if you would, skill set, knowledge that would make me an asset to the city and to the voters. I could represent them accurately because I can feel what the community wants. I'm in touch with the community. I know what they want, what they don't want, the flavors and what we don't need. That really helps me to be effective, I believe.
Right. Do you have a list of what we don't need? No, I'm not suggesting you go there.
We can compare lists that are shorter and longer.
Yeah, we probably could. You're really committed to working with veterans.
Yes.
And you've just taken on some new role there?
Yeah, I'm now the county commander of the American Legion here in Vermont, which I would be overseeing Orleans, Barton, Newport, and North Troy. Or which would be J, American Legions. And just disseminate information, help come up with ideas to help make them more successful. And help with ways to bring in revenue, of course, and membership.
And when membership joins, the more the membership, the more the revenue, the more services?
Well, that is correct. And the more services, exactly, can be provided and much more entertainment, which we all want and need. It's on that list, the things we need. Diversified, different things to do and different places to do it at as well, too.
Yeah, it's really interesting. For a small town, and Newport's a small town, we have several different veterans organizations and I assume they all work together.
Yes, yes. As a matter of fact, Easter's coming up. We at the Elks, we get together with the Legion, the VFW and the Elks Club. And we serve the community, community meals. We'll do it on Thanksgiving and Christmas as well. And the money that's raised normally, we'll just say for Easter, pays for the rest of the meals. So it's successful, it's paying for itself, and it's serving the community and getting meals. And helping community come together at their meals as well. We want that fellowship and the bonding of the community.
Right. I was at the breakfast at the VFW the other day, as were you and as were many other people. It's a really nice event.
Exactly. And it's really good people cooking good meals as well. Really, in this day and age in the market where can you for $10 get an all you can eat sausage, bacon, eggs, waffles, and so on and so forth. It's just a really good deal.
Yeah, it's a very good deal, but it was also a really important sort of social gathering.
Exactly. That way, again, fellowship that happens there when y'all sitting at a table, hopefully conversation is invoked and issues can be brought up and ideas and solutions.
Right. And I presume that the other veterans organizations do something similar, even if it's not necessarily over.
Oh yeah.
It's a place for people to gather and talk.
Correct. As individual organizations, they do their own things and what they can do in their own house, so to speak. But human to really gather, much bigger for us. We can serve large portions of the community. That's really what our goal is, to give back to the community.
When I first moved to Newport, which is a few years ago now, there was a real heartbeat in the town and there were lots of ways in which people came together. And then that gradually seemed to fall away and then COVID, of course, demolished us all. And it's really nice now that all of that anxiety about COVID, doesn't mean COVID's gone away, but the anxiety around it seems to have minimized itself, diminished. It's lovely seeing people coming together again.
It is. And also to make a fact and expand on that, to acknowledge its power. And after COVID, we become very much knowledgeable of it in itself and how it was addressed. So we are a little bit more relaxed. Again, like you said, it doesn't mean it's gone, but we don't have to be crazy about it now. I mean, it's a much more understandable thing.
I think what we learned, or what I hope we learned, is that fear is not conducive to learning.
No, it actually builds the wall up and it really stops any sort of communication wanting to learn or wanting to communicate.
So now that hopefully that barrier's come down and people are beginning to gather again. And we actually have some really wonderful events happening in Newport.
As a matter of fact, the Gateway, I wanted to comment as that. For $15, the other night I was down there, you could get a really good meal by locals, good drinks from locals for $15, and music, quality music. And add another $5, you can get into the 50/50 raffle for over $20. You can have an all-inclusive family environment and event.
And there's movies for the kids upstairs.
Yes, absolutely. And another place to fellowship, have fun and dance, to relax, like you said. Come out and be you, and be you amongst your peers and community.
And I'm sure you noticed, most of us were totally uninhibited about dancing.
Yeah, right. As a matter of fact, at some points, there almost was no more room on the dance floor.
Isn't that great?
It is, it is. That type of event, it shows where everybody gets behind it. It's to the point, really, I think it needs to expand a little bit for the seating. I mean, because I saw it, unfortunately, a few people come in and didn't see what they would perceive as enough seating and didn't enjoy the event. So unfortunately, that had happened, but you know, I think that's a good sign that they need to expand to get more people in. More people are showing up.
Yeah, it's great. Obviously, the word is out there. Do you think it's part of the council's role to build community?
That's, I would be, they would be beholden as part of that mandate, right? That would be absolutely part of it. Not only that, uphold the moral standards of the community.
Would you like to clarify that?
The moral standards of the community.
Wow, where do I go after that?
And I mean that respectfully though, really, that all eyes are upon the council and that should reflect our community. And sometimes, and in past administrations, it really had, it really put us at a disadvantage, I would say. And we need to rebuild that, which I believe this administration is heading in that direction for certain. And certainly, I want to join that team and be part of it and its successes and contribute to that.
There's certainly a lot of hard work being done presently to build something, to move forward.
And a lot of times too, when allowed to focus on the issues and not other, we'll just say frivolous items. And not to say that everybody needs to be heard, whether right or wrong, they need to be heard. So I want to be supportive to that. But without a lot of hurdles and stumbling blocks, we can make much more successes sooner and do the hard work behind the scenes that nobody really sees. They only see up that table and hold people accountable and questionable only for them, let's say, an hour, without knowing the work they do behind the scenes that help move the city forward.
Yeah, there's a lot of work that happens with the council.
And it's a team and it has to be a team effort and ought for that to happen. And if everybody's individuals, we're going to stay in a quagmire and a stalemate. And it appears that we're getting over, like again, like I said, over that hump and we're going forward. The incline doesn't seem so dramatic now. You know, success in moving forward, there's always an incline. It's never a flat plain. We always have to work for it, but the incline's not so dramatic now. It's a little easier.
Where would you like to see the council and the city? And I guess what I'm really asking is, what's your vision for the city?
The vision clearly, as others share, is to bring more people in, of course, for revenue. A place where someone could build a business and be successful. A place where someone can move to or relocate with their family, feel safe, feel valued. And how things would keep them here. I believe our mission is really to, to work hard to get development, housing for all classes. Because that's all parts of the community.
Absolutely.
That's it there.
Yeah. And this is your third round of running, right? Maybe four, three, I think.
Yes.
When you first decided to run, do you think that you've broadened your goals since then?
In what regard?
Do you see the council moving in ways now that they weren't before?
Oh, absolutely, yes. That's kind of what I was alluding to. We were quite a stalemate and quagmire for quite a while. You can really see that we're trying to make great efforts to move forward. And that's obtainable and that's achievable. And I believe with a great team in place, that's going to happen. And that will help bring the community on board. The community has feared our city council, so to speak, for too long. And now the city council appears to be working for the city and us, the community. And the community is embracing that. And once they get behind that and feel valued, more ideas are going to come out. More volunteers are going to come out. We're going to see a lot of things recreational wise. A lot of people really care about that.
They do.
And feel strongly about it, which I do as well too. Because when the weather is nice, you don't want to be inside.
Absolutely not.
You want to be outside and we want to find things to occupy us. I mean, we can walk all day long. We have great walking paths. We could stop at different shops. That's one of the goals as well, too. To bring more shops and boutiques where someone would want to walk down Main Street and patronize.
Yeah. You made a really good point a minute ago, which is about people feeling valued.
Thank you. Someone finally gave me.
Carl, you often make good points. You said that something that's changing is that people start to feel valued. And that's really important.
Human connection really is attached to two things, empathy and validation. When someone's validated that, or empathized that there's a situation or you're in a circum predicament, that empathy is showing that you can cognitively understand that situation and sense emotionally their emotions. You can connect in that way. And validating is certainly addressing that you do have a problem or a success. Validation goes both ways. And that just shows that you had paid attention and that's that connection. Without those two, we're empty, we're robots, without those two.
How do you think as a council member, you can do that? Given that the council has to quote "do business" too, and they really do.
Well, that should be inherently in you. And that should, your walk and your talk should be side by side. One should never be forward or behind the other, should always be side by side. So that should be screwed it out. And let's just use the MVP example. That doesn't mean most valuable person or player. It means moral values and principles. And that's the thing someone should qualities to be on the council. To see things, to be a part of the community, to be able to empathize and validate the community. One must have to have roots or connections or a long time in the community to really understand that, to feel it. Intuitive, I guess.
Right. I mean, I don't know that I necessarily think you have to have lived in a community a long time to be able to contribute to it.
No, 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 for the feeling I was referring to, just for the feeling. You just know, you know. No, no, you can come to any community, be anywhere and validate. I mean, we're all, again, inherently the same. Doesn't matter where we're from, as long as we have the same principles and values. We should all quite easily get along.
Well, it's okay to have disagreements. It's how we resolve those.
Right. And that's how we come up with ideas as well, too. Sometimes, an idea can be birthed through resistance. You know, famously, Thomas Edison had 999 mistakes and one success, right, in a million?
Yes. Yeah. I mean, I think that's probably hyperbole, but.
But I mean, we can take it for what it's worth.
Yeah, exactly. So if I were to ask you, how would you see Newport in five years? What's Newport going to look like if you're on the council?
I believe Newport is going to be more, certainly inclusive. But I believe we're in a direction where we're looking for more activities to do outside. Other music shows, we'll have the one that's on the waterfront, beautiful. And the park, we'll have the music shows in the park. The vendors, the farmer's market, just great things. The restaurants. I'd like to see more shows, too. It'd be a nice.
Theater?
Yeah, a nice theater. Something someone can go and watch. Again, diversified for everybody. I see, I see we building the foundation where other developers and businesses would see us as a more viable candidate, perhaps come here. We're building our infrastructure, we're focusing, excuse me, focusing on that. And a lot of them are either updated or new. So that's a good thing. So we have longevity of those services where they would find that to be a very viable to come in, I would imagine.
Right. What do you think about the airport?
Airport is much needed, of course. I love the fact that the international monikers on that. The fact that we're close to the border.
We're on the border.
But a lot of the people who visit, clientele and business owners, are from other areas. And for them to get up here to have fun or to manage their businesses or to meet and connect and coordinate, they much valued, valuable asset right there. To get people in and out and convenience. I think convenience, I believe it's going to bring a lot more revenue in here as it grows as well, too.
Yeah. Who do you think will use it?
Initially, I would think the convenience would be corporations, large businesses or more successful business owners, perhaps celebrities. You know, to get closer to JP for skiing, perhaps. If they're flying from, say, California land there and it's a short drive to JP. We want them to stay in Newport, but it is for everybody.
JP's important.
Well, yeah. I mean, we can share. I mean, that's part of our broader community.
JP has a big resource for here.
It is. And we love them. And they're certainly moving forward in great directions. If the snow would cooperate, I think we're going to be doing good.
Yeah. A few years ago, I was lucky enough to have a flight on one of their small planes at the airport. It was a wonderful perspective.
I would imagine. A lot of people have asked me, have you been up on that plane yet? And I plan on doing it because that same thing, I want to see that one view that you'll never see unless you get up there and do it. And I believe with that, it'll open my eyes much more than they are to Newport. So I can, my heart and take it in, in that view.
I mean, we flew up the lake, turned at the other end and came back. And coming into Newport that way, it was beautiful.
I would dare to say that it probably didn't look like Newport. You probably, it was so picturesque.
It was lovely. It really was. And it was a perspective that we never get standing on the ground. The bird's eye view.
I like, excuse me, I like, there's some artists around here using drone technology. I like that too. Some of the photos I've seen, beautiful in that perspective. The bird's eye view, so to speak. Yeah, I like that.
One of those artists I had on the show a couple of weeks ago. It's amazing. I mean, what we can do with technology and not even high-priced technology.
And with that, I would, if I'm the council, I would.
Like a drone view?
If we could actually somehow utilize that technology, help promote Newport with some of those views and the sights and stuff that you would normally see.
That's actually something that you could do not on the council. And I think you're right. I think that would be a wonderful marketing tool for Newport.
And you're right too. It doesn't have to be on council to suggest it or anything.
I mean, I think the council seems to have so much work to do. But that would be really interesting, yeah.
With their team who does the advertising and so on, someone would utilize that technology.
Yeah. I mean, marketing an area is a skill.
And I think it would be valuable too, if not, they're already looking into it for police and fire as well. That may be a great tool for them as well.
They probably already have it.
Right. I don't know that for a fact.
Right, me neither.
But that would be very interesting. I mean, I would certainly say you could arrive much quicker or observe much quicker and sooner and give direction.
I mean, I think I'm probably very late to the drone game and probably you are as well. But I think very young people, it's just effect of life for them.
I can hit the button and get them to fly up.
Oh, cool.
That's about it.
I haven't even tried that, but I believe that it can be done. And I do enjoy looking at the drone videos.
Right, again, it's that view that you don't ever see.
Yeah, amazing. So what are some of your other thoughts about Newport moving forward?
The community getting more interested in a lot of projects that I, that I, I had happened, me personally, noticed that they weren't kind of involved in before or even talking about. So I'd like to see more community involvement. I'd like to see more community groups that address problems or successes or can contribute and bring that to the council. Whereas only a few can represent the large with the space in that room. But also, that will be their own community successes. If they're in charge of that and it, you know, it takes, you know, a village.
It does.
And I think if we get some strong community leaders who are willing to step up and to direct these meetings, I believe there's some great, successful ideas and worth to this community.
So you're talking about a model that isn't from the top down, it's from the bottom up.
Right.
Grassroots.
Grassroots, but I mean, isn't everything supposed to come from a community first?
I believe so. That's my belief system.
The old adage of things roll downhill and that's, it actually particularly rolls uphill, it should.
Yeah, I much prefer creativity from the grassroots up as it being told what to do from the top down.
Well, we should all be on board. The idea should be conducive for everybody. Excuse me, inclusive, but to everybody. We shouldn't be battling our community leaders. We should be embracing and strengthening them, strengthen our communities and ideally ourselves. So for like me, that my motto was, I want to better myself, my community and the city.
Yeah. How do you define your community?
Again, the group of people who really care, the core. I mean, the community's everybody, really. But with that, I would like to have everybody involved in everything. That's just not going to happen. But the strong amount of, yeah, that's the other side. There's always a balance. But the people who care about the community and contribute to the community, those, those are the people, you know, we should embrace. Again, and help empower them to step up, to maybe perhaps run for council, mayor, or any other city job or council or board. If you can't do it in that way, do it with sweat equity. Go do something. Start a community activity, start a community group. Just get involved and I like that. That's what it takes. It takes everybody, you know, not just to say, hey, you get to tell us what to do. We have ideas. This affects us. We'd like to see this happen. Is this reasonable and acceptable?
One of the ideas that keeps coming around is about a community center. Because we don't have one.
Absolutely. I've spoke for years about a youth center as well, too. If we can capture our youth in this generation, we can affect it and hopefully make a real good difference. If we're opening our eyes, we should be right now, the news that has been released, so on and so forth in our community, there's things among us now that was never among us. So these are new issues we have to deal with and we have to take stances on them. Real firm stances, not in my community.
Right. And that has to come from the grassroots.
That has to come from all directions, but definitely from the community, not in my community. I'm not going to tolerate it and we're not going to have it.
And that's a really powerful stance and it will help.
It is. In order to make those changes, come up with the ideas, come up with, come up to the meetings, influence those policies. And if you don't like or you do like, you elect. And that's it. That's your voice. And that's empowerment. There's no more greater power than this.
Right. Yeah. Do you think the communities around here are organizing?
Do I think they're organizing? Yeah, much, much more coordinatedly now. Again, we're embracing ideas and seeing a new direction and feeling comfortable. Our defensive wall was coming down. And without a lot of distractions, we can see things. And I think we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel. It's a little brighter.
That's always helpful.
And that's one thing you would want to invoke, is hope and give proof and testament to that.
Yeah. So in the last three or four minutes that we have, what do you really want people to know about you?
I want everybody to know that I'm just a normal guy like everybody else. I'm not above or below anybody. I'm just right where I need to be, right next to you. And without you electing me, I can't represent you or your voice. I'm very passionate about Newport and I think everybody else is. And we have a lot of issues that we need to deal with and we need to calmly do it and we need to knowledgeably do it. And we need to actually put forth the steps to do it. And I think we have a lot of successful ideas and team members in place to make that change and that transition to the future that much more easily and tangible. There's things out there we can see, touch and smell that are positive. And I believe this administration, this team, again, I'd like to, you know, contribute to it. And without you putting me in that place to represent you, I can't do it. There are other great candidates. Don't get me wrong. I'm not here to bash anybody. I'm here to put myself on the line. I've been judged. I've been congratulated. I'm no better than anybody else. I think, I'd like to say I deserve a chance. I'm fighting hard. And if you're curious about who I am and what I can do, give me the opportunity. That's all I ask. And I'm not going to give up. The day I give up is the day my dissenters will win. And that's it. Newport deserves someone that passionate. And if you're not coming to the table with Newport Business, you don't belong at the table. Thank you.
Well, on that note, and that's a strong, positive note, thank you for coming in.
Thank you Pam, as always. It's been a pleasure.
It's fun. It's fun.
It's fun and it's a good way to get information out and people. People who want to stand up and contribute to the community.
It's important for you to be able to show people who you are and for people to be able to see that and for them to be able to ask you questions. Because you're visible in Newport. They can stop you on the street.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I'm night or day, 24/7, I'm available. Three in the morning, I'm not going to be so enthused about it, but...
Right.
No, just teasing.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you again.
And good luck.